Which is actually an 82% reduction in the overspend reported in October.
I'm sure you have a supplementary?
Yes, I do. Just give me a few minutes. Okay. The actual projected overspend in health and wellbeing isn't 722,000, it's 1.663 million, which is about more than twice as much. So, why should we have any confidence in the figures in next year's budget when this meeting is a big defeat on controlling this year's spending and you're adding another 722,000 pounds of spending that you haven't got?
You asked me about the overall position. As I said, the overall position has reduced significantly from what we reported in October. Within that, there are obviously swings in different budgets and we have pressures in adult social care that are significant, as you are well aware, and we will continue to monitor that, but there are people who need our services and we will deliver services to those people who need them. We will make savings elsewhere if we have to in order to fund the services that we have to provide to people in need in that particular area. As I said, the main issue has been the Department of Health funding, but we do have significant demand-led budget and therefore there are aspects of that budget that we can't control because there are people who need our services and we are here to provide them.
Thank you. Can I call for Councillor Rochelle, head of the debate?
Does WBC plan to require all these SUDs systems given to the WBC to be provided with the necessary funding to require the operator to pay for yearly inspections by WBC?
Thank you Rochelle for that question. Working Borough Council requires the developer to pay a commuted sum to the council on the adoption of the sustainable drainage SUDs feature to cover its future maintenance requirements. Commuted sums of financial contributions made by third parties to the local authority as compensation for taking on the future maintenance responsibility for newly created highways and drainage improvements. They are usually secured through legal agreements made with the developers and landowners under section 38 or two sub-mates of the Highways Act 1980, and it's a single payment that's invested over an agreement period of time. The SUDs features that are not adopted by the council, arrangements need to be made with other risk management authorities such as Thames Water or town and parish councils for the adoption of the SUDs, or the developer will be required to make arrangements for a management company to conduct regular inspections and maintenance. The SUDs strategy requires developers to submit information to the council, clearly defining the maintenance of the SUDs for the entire lifetime of the development, as well as the agreements demonstrated to be in place to ensure these arrangements do not lapse. An example of where this strategy has recently been implemented is the proposed system for attenuation ponds which make up part of the drainage for the nine mile ride extension. Working Borough Council will be adopting these features and an appropriate commuted sum has been agreed to cover the costs of future maintenance.
I'm sure you have a supplementary?
Since all of us don't necessarily wish to tread water in these places if they do flood, and depending on the number of houses, depending on how the maps go, Mark, whether they are the same numbers or not the same numbers, how are we going to make sure that they're actually cleaned as well? If during these inspections we find they're not being done, how can we make sure that they've been cleaned?
That is a very good question, and all SUDs owners, including the council, risk management authorities such as Thames Water, private landowners or management companies, have a duty to inspect and maintain their SUDs systems in perpetuity. For further assurance, we as a local lead flood authority, something was given to us under the Flood and Water Management Act 2010, will place SUDs systems that are in private ownership on the council's asset register to ensure they are inspected and maintained as necessary.
Thank you. That's ended almost an hour's worth of questions, which I think has been very helpful and useful. We now move into the matters for consideration. My plan is to take item 104, disabled children's family support and short breaks, now, followed by the Shinfield one. Charlotte, would you like to...
Thank you Chair. In working at the moment, the disabled children's family team supports about 200 children and families, but within the borough, the CAM network supports about 928 families. And as I mentioned before in answering all my questions, we believe that many families don't access all of the services at the moment, as is demonstrated by the reach survey that's just been carried out. We, parents have identified gaps in services, they've said that weekend breaks, for example, are something that they would like to have more of, and overnight stays and early morning turn times as well. The proposals within the paper set out in the agenda are to move towards a new commissioning model, which we think will be more efficient. So families will have a personalised budget and direct payment costs, known as prepaid costs, exactly the same as in the adult social care service. We think this will give families much more control about how they spend their funds and the council will also commit to purchase from any provider as well if families do not wish to go down this route. We think that it will have, there will be a broader choice for families for breaks for disabled children and young people to choose from, and that it will help to address some of the gaps that are already identified by families. We also think that this will also increase the opportunity for the markets to develop, to meet the needs of families, to increase the choice and innovation. This proposal is, as I said before, answering one of the questions, is not to do it all at once, but to do it in phases over two years, and we aim to support our providers with INVOLVE, which is an umbrella organisation, so that it's not done to them tomorrow. There will be a proposal, or those are proposals, for preferred providers list, and we think that this will be extremely helpful for our families as well. And we think that we can try and mitigate against families finding it difficult and also for the voluntary sector going forward as well, so in terms of particularly the smaller groups. So we've got an opportunities fund that's planned within the proposals as well, because if you're a much smaller group and you're trying to transform into a commission service, into a prepaid payment system, then you might need a little bit of help to get over that initial jump. So the proposals are listed on page 285, and also we would like to take a consultation forward in March, and I hope that as many families and young people, and also our providers will also take part in that, to take forward these proposals and to bring them into fruition and help shape them.
Thank you for a very comprehensive introduction to this item. Are there any questions?
Just one. Thank you Chair. Charlotte and I have spoken about this on many occasions, adults took this through a year, 18 months ago, and I appreciate all the questions that are coming this evening about the consultation and the concern of what this will have for small charities and their provision. But I think we've ironed out a lot of the concerns within adults before we rolled it out to children, so we've learnt a lot from that, and hopefully it'll actually lead to more choice, better reach, and actually see more control for people who actually give more choice. Thank you.
Yeah, I totally agree, and I think that, you know, I think that reading through the survey, that Reach really, you know, did a great job of getting out to some of our families who just aren't accessing any of our services around the borough, I think that this hopefully will engage them and they will see what is out there. If we have a providers list and they can see what is on there, then they will have confidence about services that are there and be able to access them.
Thank you. If there's no more questions, I'll go straight to the vote. All those in favour of the recommendations, 104 on page 285. That's unanimous, thank you very much. People who are here, if you want to stay till the rest of the meeting, but otherwise just feel free to leave. Let's move then to the other actually very exciting item, item 102, which is the Shinfield Parish Neighbourhood Plan, and 265. I say it's exciting because it's the first full-blown neighbourhood plan within the borough, and congratulations to the team at Shinfield for working extremely hard to do this. It hasn't been easy, the government have set very high barriers to entry on this, and they've succeeded. So, Mark, would you like to introduce this topic?
Thank you Mr Chair for having stolen most of my time.
I can do some more if you might.
No, no, it's fine, you might present the report. No, that's fine. A referendum on the Shinfield Parish Neighbourhood Plan was held on the 8th of December 2016, and of those who voted, 87% voted yes to the question of whether they wish the plan to be used to help determine planning applications within the Shinfield Parish area. A resounding victory. As a result of the referendum, we're under legal duty to make the plan, bring it into force, and this needs to be done by the 3rd of February, hence today I'm asking you, please, to recommend that the Shinfield Parish Neighbourhood Plan be made. Thank you very much.
Not surprising, the Shinfield Neighbourhood wanted Anthony first, followed by Charlotte.
Thank you, yes, I do want to pay tribute to the parish council, who worked hard on this and over a long period of time, and the challenges that they faced with making it in conformity with the core strategy, which I know caused some issues, but well done, and also well done to have a 15% of the electorate who are brave to a cold December day to come out and vote.
Charlotte?
Thank you Chair. 87% voted yes in our local community for this plan, which shows that I think an overwhelming support for it, and I just also wanted to put on record my congratulations to all of those at Shinfield Parish Council who have been completely committed and dedicated and put in all of such a tremendous amount of time and effort into putting this neighbourhood plan together, and historically the first for our borough, so congratulations.
Angus?
Thank you Chair. Yes, I think it was a mammoth task, and I congratulate Shinfield for getting this through. There is of course some support given from here, but the point I'd like to make is I hope that this allows a good dialogue with Shinfield Parish Council and this council as the developments move forward.
Thank you Angus, and it does mean that the current councillors are not allowed to resign. It's not the end of a journey, it's the start of a brand new journey as you move forward, because potentially you'll have a reasonable amount of money to spend, not in the bar. So if there's no more comments, we've got recommendations there, 1 and 2, all those in favour of me, Rochelle. Congratulations again, and we'll be around for a congratulatory drink sometime if you can bear to that.
Keith, would I just say, yeah, I just wanted to, we're talking council, so there's also officers involved, and especially the deputy clerk, Katie Hughes, because I know that you put a lot of work into this, and we thank you, most of the work into this, and we thank you so much. I mean, this is localism in action and a great first step for us all, thank you.
Right, you're free to leave now, there's no more accolades coming your way, just enjoy them, there's a nice pub across the road if you want to buy a bottle of champagne. Right, so now let's get back to the agenda items. Item 90, council over country business, on pages 21 to 28. I'm not in flight at the time, I'm not intending to pull out anything, but we do have the commissioner for Optulus, and we do have other people here who can answer your questions. We have a full specific, Optulus Next, and the major... So are there any questions for council on company business, otherwise? There are recommendations, well, it's a note, all those in favour of me, Rochelle. Thank you. Move on to another very exciting piece.
If you don't excuse me, we'll go and have a coffee.
If we don't come and get you in half an hour, then you can see we can go home.
So this is the update on the business case from earlier with the World Borough Clubs and May, Ned Dack.
Thank you Chair, and we're working on the back of the good news on the Shinfield Plan, this is more good news. This was one of the intentions for when Optulus was set up, that we would widen it to other partners, and this is the first step in doing that, working with Royal Borough, Windsor and Mayton Head, and the recommendations are 104 in your agenda, but any questions happy to take?
No? Okay, come on, we've got to spend some time to keep him out, isn't there?
Question the colour of the paper.
Yeah, okay, so there's no questions, on page 89, there's recommendations, 104, all those in favour of me, Rochelle. That's unanimous, thank you very much. We have to wait until he comes in, he's got the next two, three, four, the next four items. So those following in the blue book, page 89, take on. You're up for the next four items.
Right, yeah, so we'll have your coffee for you. I don't come down. Right, okay.
I remember you answered, sorry. Page 89.
Okay, thank you, yes. As Drew drew to our attention earlier, we have an 812,000 overspend, regrettable, the Department of Health decided to remay on their promised 722,000 compensation for the government changing, or forcing us to change our diversity criteria and therefore to take on extra costs. Not happy about that, we just have to suck it up at the present time. Do you want to say, want to quickly say something on that?
As members will know, we had an issue where the Department of Health, which clearly stated that if we had additional services we needed to provide, that that would actually be forthcoming additional funding, we felt we made a very good case. As people will know, we issued a judicial review along with our colleagues in West Berkshire. The Department of Health subsequently came back and asked us to withdraw that judicial review, and subsequently paid all our legal costs, we then engaged with them for the next year. I think we've gone through two or possibly three Secretary of States, or Ministers rather, I've met at least two of them. The Department of Health did come back just before Christmas, only about 18 months late, to say that they weren't implying to give us any additional funding, so we are exploring what other options are available to us with our colleagues in West Berkshire, so all may not be lost, it may just be limited.
So we're being prudent in basically taking it as a loss, so to speak, but I trust you've got to lob all the relevant ministers.
Tried that, it didn't work.
And come back with some more money. But the principle, I think as I said earlier, is in the health and wellbeing arena, it's a demand-led budget, and that does mean that there's elements of our spending which is, it's the need of the individual people, and if they qualify, we have to pay. So that's the pressure there, but obviously some pressure, some children's services, Shant's got more children to look after, and they come with more needs, and there are rising cohorts of children with those disabilities again, which require us to cover those needs. Good news, the chief execs department, the environment, the finance resources underspent, and therefore the budget is...
Don't you worry then.
Well, I'll come round later with my cap. But on balance, 812, given the pressures that will be had from the Department of Health, as I said earlier in my earlier answer, you know, leaves us with 100,000 overspend effectively on a life-for-life basis, which in the current climate actually is a pretty good result. I will take any questions, there's details of the relevant areas on page 93, there's the aspect of the general fund carry forward on page 94. I am particularly pleased that we've still got nine million reserves, as I think future years will be harder. Page 96 relates to the housing revenue account, which shows we have reasonable reserves there, and schools block grant on page 97, we have an in-year deficit, but I, hopefully, that is not going to continue, though Charlotte has commented earlier on pressures on the school budgets and school funding. Page 98 again shows healthy investments, 55 million, a lot of this is relating to, we get grants for particularly schools upfront, and so we can have money for a year or maybe two years before we actually need to spend it, but it does give us some extra income as well. I'll take any questions if anyone has any.
Any questions, or could we go straight to the vote?
I'll just support your comment about the general fund balance, and I think we could see that the benefit of that, and what happened a few months ago, when we received some bad news from central government, and other local authorities not far to the west of us received the same, and the impact on them without those balances was quite dramatic.
Malcolm, and then, sorry, Charlotte?
Thank you Chair. Just a brief comment, you mentioned homeschool transport law and special education needs, but just one of the things that we've proved just a few months back in the executive here was to start up a special education needs at St Crispin's, and that's one of the innovations I think that we've started to do here at the borough, and that hopefully will start to see the reduction in costs, particularly around transport costs around moving children outside of the area to be educated. And also we've got in an innovation bid at the moment with the Department for Education. If we win this, it'd be really exciting, because we've already gone a really long way with our sense of safety in our social work sphere, and this will hopefully refresh our new recruitment and retention strategy as well, as we see that's the pressure, as you'll see, within children's social care as well, but hopefully we'll all hear news soon about it.
Can I just come back to that here, quickly? I think I also want to pay tribute to officers who, you know, do a lot of work on the front line, and often making the difficult decisions, and I think it does show the professionalism that they show. Yes, we set the tone, I think, in our expectations of spending, but they have to deliver it in a difficult, difficult climate, so I do want to put that on record.
Thank you. If there's no more questions, let's go straight to the vote on page 89, there's three recommendations, all those in favour of me, Rochelle. Thank you. Again, Captain Montry, can I just point out that it's quarter to nine, and we've probably got about another dozen to go through, so...
Okay, so reports as you can see it, any questions?
He goes from one extreme to the other.
Any question? Can I go straight to the vote, all those in favour of the recommendations? Thank you. Unanimous, leisure strategy. Oh, sorry, sorry. 94, Chief Financial...
My recommendation for a riveting read if you can't sleep. And it is, it is a very good, it's setter against the background, risks to the authority, again, very important, very valuable, probably the most coherent report that puts everything into context, and I recommend it to everyone. Any questions?
I can confirm, it does put, I mean, it's riveting. So, recommendation there is that we note the report and the issues contained, all those in favour of me, Rochelle. That's unanimous.
95?
95, treasury management, yet another sleeping, I mean, wonderful thing.
This again is a really, really, really important document, because it connects the capital programme to investments and borrowings, and the borrowing levels of this authority are surprisingly low. If you, I was trying to find it earlier, I could say, hang on a second, I'm sorry, I will bring this to your attention. Page 140, general fund capital expenditure and financing, and you've got those figures there, and where did I see it? External borrowing, 142, bottom of page 142, table 7, investments in the market, 24, public executive works going board, 107. Most of that is housing revenue where we have to buy back something we already own, and the Orwellian world of government, so given the fact that 90-odd million is affecting the housing revenue account, actually, you know, a pretty good, a pretty good situation there, and you can see further up, you know, general fund and capital further up to that. So I would say, generally speaking, this is, shows that we are prudent in the borrowings we take on, we're prudent in our service, we are investing money in effectively fixed assets, because we're building a significant number of schools, we're building a certain number of roads, we are rebuilding the town centre working on, which is an income-producing asset, so on balance, I think it's prudent, and I recommend it to you all.
Any questions or comments to the vote? Okay, so on page 133, there's three recommendations, all those in favour of me, Rochelle. That's unanimous. 21st Century Council update, 159, it's got two names in the title, this one. Basically, the executives last time we came through to implement the 21st Century Programme, we committed to do an update, this is the first one, as you can see there, we're talking about phase one, on page 160, new senior literature team, reconfiguring, reconfigured strategy and commissioning, the IT part obviously, which is critical because it underpins everything, and rules and scripts, so that's well underway. There's been significant member engagement, the Member Officer Working Group is monitoring and supporting the implementation, and more sustainable finance group is monitoring the numbers associated with that. So I've got one question here from...
I'm not going to ask a question, although I answered what you just said.
Okay, please do.
Thanks, just to highlight the IT elements of this programme, one of the key things in integrating all the elements together is to make sure that people are actually working in value-add provision of service, rather than in pulling data from one system to another, and it's, this programme's all about trying to focus people on providing service to people that we have, rather than on administrative non-value-add movement of data. So just to thank the various backbenchers, we've got a group of backbenchers who have got deep IT knowledge, who've been helping us make sure that the IT programme is going to, going to plan it, it is so far, and I'd like to thank both the Conservative backbenchers and also Liberal Democrat backbencher, who is also helping us.
Thank you. We know that.
That's two of us then.
So it's really just to note, as far as, everything is on track, we've still got a long way to go, so recommendations to let, all those in favour of me, Rochelle. Unanimous? Now we get to the leisure strategy.
Yes, very quickly, we've seen this before in its draft form, it's a high-level document aimed to fit in with the 21st Century work, which we've been talking about, and help inform the upcoming leisure contract specifications and the planning pitch strategy. We did an eight-week consultation, ended up on 23rd of December, a very good 139 responses, which were all valuable, but many of them were not particularly relevant to the strategy, but in themselves were very interesting and useful comments about some of the, both the facilities and the activities that we undertake. The responses largely in favour, and from those, there's no proposed changes from the consultation draft, so I'm asking you to ratify and endorse the leisure strategy. asking you to ratify and endorse the leisure strategy. Any questions, comments? Charlotte?
Thank you very much. With all of the consultation responses, Anthony useful in informing what we already have. And may I just ask that those comments are kept aside for informing future needs and requirements of the Borough in terms of what we might have thought of and what we might not have thought of in terms of new provision?
Absolutely.
Thank you. If there's no other questions, the recommendation, sir, on one six three, to ratify and endorse the strategy. All those in favour please show. That's unanimous again. SUDS. It's unfortunate that the council in Shepherd's Bay, who's interested in SUDS, isn't actually here to hear the deliberations, but ugly.
Well, we have spoken something about some of the benefits of this. Back when the government, their original intention for the flood water management act, twenty-ten, was for local lead flood authorities, like ourselves to approve SUDS and then adopt them. But they reneged on that in the end. And it's all now the planning system and this council, and really, we are national leader in this, have produced this rather technically-based strategy so developers and planning officers at the earliest stage of a planning application can find the most appropriate SUDS for that particular development. We had thirteen responses to the consultation. It resulted in some small improvements, which are outlined on page one eighty-six and seven. Thank you for all those that did make those comments, but especially thanks and credit to the drainage officer, Fran Hobson, who put together a splendid work. And it's something that's seen be at many other councils. So I'm asking that we note the summary and approve the amended strategy.
Any questions? Anthony? All those in favour please show. Recommendation on page one seven seven two. All those in favour. That's unanimous. Community infrastructure levy regulation, one, two, three, list clarification. Mark?
Yes, thank you. This we brought to you before. We went out to consultation. And we really want you just to note that consultation responses and adopt the updated regulation, this one, two, three. Any questions?
No. Okay, so it's a technical paper.
It is.
Recommendations, two of us on page one eighty-nine. All those in favour, please show. That's done. The next one is, thank you, two, two, three. Angus, enjoy.
Request for attempted closure at the Football Forest Revue, annual request, which we pass on if you consent to this, to the Secretary of State for Transport, who has done this since two thousand and nine. Difference this time is we only had one objection from the Open Space Society. I think we've worn the others down. It obviously does. Sensible diversion during the Henry Festival. We did consult, although not statutory required to, I recommend that we do as the recommendation on page two to three.
Any questions or can we go straight to those? All those in favour, please, on the two recommendations page, two, two, three. That's unanimous. Next one is the risk management policies and guidance, page two thirty-five. Pauline, I know you love risk, so would you like to take this one?
Yeah, but this is tidying up really. We're currently obliged to bring the enterprise risk management policy to executive every year, even if it hasn't changed. So I'd like to ask you to consider the enterprise risk management policy guidance. This year, it hasn't changed. And it does follow best practice, I think, in terms of what I've seen outside. And the second item I'd like to ask you to do is recommend that the Constitutional Rebroking Group consider amended terms of reference as to the request of the Order Committee, which is that it only gets brought back when it has actually changed, when the Order Committee requests it changed, rather than being brought back every year. That's saved money, that will save payment, that will save treats, and actually it won't damage our response.
Thank you, Pauline, much. Point two makes eminent sense, but they still need to agree going forward. Any questions or can I go straight to the vote? Right, go straight to the vote, page two, three, five, two. All those in favour, unanimous. Next one? Yeah, we've done the next one. Thames Valley adoption. This actually is very, very important.
Very important and very good news. We are already part of the Doctors of Berkshire, which was set up in two thousand and fourteen with Ratnall, Royal Borough, Windsor, Maidenhead and West of Berkshire. So four of us together. And the government set up new legislation in two thousand and fifteen, June, setting out that local authorities should have new rules, regional adoption agencies by twenty-twenty. So this paper is to ask for your support that we move into a regional adoption authority, looking to work with Oxford, County Council, West Berkshire, the Royal Borough of Windsor, Maidenhead, Ratnall, Forest Council, Swindon and Reading, and also work together with our two voluntary adoption agencies, which are Bernardo's and PACT. We think that this is a really positive story because we think it will improve our services for children and adopters. It will mean that we'll have a larger pool of adopted families. And it will help us to place our order to adopt children and make us hopefully have much quicker matches as well. It will mean that we'll have a new governance board, which hopefully will have a place for our member children services this time as well. Good news for you, Anthony, it is cost neutral. And we have a grant also from central government for two hundred thousand pounds shared between the authorities to set this up as well. So no costs there either. And also, we think that it will help build our post-adoption services as well because by coming together, we will be able to share all of our services. And also, just worth noting that Oxford has particularly strong post-adoption services as well. We have done some due diligence and we have an expression of interest for one authority to host, and that was Oxford. And so that is the recommendation, that they are the host authority. And we expect there to be a plan base also within Berkshire as well. And we expect that will be in working, but there's still some more work to be done on that. So hopefully you will all see the recommendations on page two, seven, seven, and agree those.
Thank you, Charlotte. And we can't stress enough that adoption is vital for our children, not just in working, but right across Thames Valley. Are there any questions or comments? Can we go straight to the vote? So page two, seven, seven, there's three there. All those in favour please show. That's unanimous. We've done the next one. Unanimous two, two nine three, the agenda item. The next two agenda items do have part two items. So what I'm recommending doing, that we cover off the non-part two items whilst people are here. And then also, if you do need to go to part two, we'll sort of reconvene once the local houses are here, if that's acceptable. You may not need to go to the part two. So another really exciting, the dead centre of Ruscombe, Ruscombe Barrow Ground. Angus?
Thank you, Chairman. Good introduction to this. The Borough does have two current cemeteries in St Sebastian's, working with that, and in Shinnfield, which is near a respective wood, isn't it? We will need more capacity. And currently, there's no Borough facility in the north of the Borough. So seeking approval to purchase with section one and six money and obviously subject to planning commission. It's a very good offer from the church for this site. And some of the details, as you say, Chairman, are in part two. But I think this is an opportunity which we shouldn't miss. There will be further requirements. We do get provisions from all developments in Borough. But this particular one, I think, will fit in with our provisional very, very well. Just to add as a side point to it, and it's come out of some discussions as this item's come up, that the Muslim community have had issues because they've had to go to provision in Reading. And as they're not residents of Reading, they pay as an official son. And we're working very much with that community so that we can provide the service for them within this Borough.
Okay. So are there any questions? Do we need to go to part two? No. So let's go straight to the recommendation. Two nine three, one and two, all those in favour please show. That's unanimous. And then the last one, supported housing development at fifty at Reading Road. That's for those of you who don't know where it's located, it's on the corner of Station Link Road and Reading Road. You'll see it without a fancy note, sorry. Julian?
Thank you, Chairman. I think this is another good news story in that we own the property and have done it for some time. So the recommendation is as it is laid out in the agenda before you. So we transfer property to working housing. And then it's redevelop the supported housing for vulnerable adults. Do I have to take any questions?
Do we have any questions at all? Again, it's a good use of our asset.
It is.
Providing absolute facilities, good facilities for our residents. Right, so if there's no questions, let's go straight to the vote. Three of one, six, six recommendations. All those in favour please show. That's unanimous. And I think that is the end of the executive. Thank you for your participation.
Okay, do we have any apologies? Thank you. Minutes of previous meeting, trustee of all revenue, are there any amendments? No? Okay, thank you. Any declarations of interest? All good. Doing well so far. Any further questions? Excellent. Any member questions? Well, item six, council tax base, two seventeen eighteen, and empty property discounts. Who's going to speak on this one?
Thank you. The council tax base is a technical calculation relating to the number of the properties that we have in the Borough. We have to set that number this time every year because that's the number we define what we're going to raise in the council tax in February. And the other piece I will draw your attention to, which is the little table on page fourteen. You may recall about, maybe five years ago, the government decided to give us some responsibility for some, what do I call, benefits effectively. They had been effectively a government-run scheme where we paid it, they gave it back to us. They did the usual piece of, we'll give it to you, but we're going to give you less. And then they put it in the base and then they've taken it away. So we've effectively funded it all ourselves over the last few years, or we will do by the time the revenue support grant disappears. So we, from time to time, we review these schemes. This one is effectively of the exemption from council tax. And we are tweaking it a bit this year to give less away. So that's what this one is about, page fourteen particularly. And you can see the other bits and pieces. The other thing I would just point out on page twelve, we are assuming a bad debt provision of one percent. I think if you did read the budget monitoring, you will find that we actually over-collected in our council tax. So the one percent is prudent, but I would hope that it will be better than that next year. I'll take any questions, sorry, I will take any questions if anyone has any. Okay, always like to hear everyone in the council and say that something's prudent. Are there any questions for, at the council?
Okay, the recommendation is on page eleven. Can I have all those in favour of the recommendation? Looks to be unanimous to me.
Okay.
Page seventeen, can I just talk you through this one? This is the other benefit that we took over from the government, which is more of an income protection for people at the bottom of the end of scale of income. Again, we tweak this, we keep an eye on what our neighbouring authorities, where they charge effectively or don't charge. And we think that there's probably a little bit more that we can effectively take back. But bearing in mind, these are vulnerable people, we don't want to take too much because effectively we already know we can't collect it, so we get bad debts anyway. So but we see our neighbouring authorities being able to take a little bit more. And therefore, perhaps we feel we can bother in their wake. But we aren't as, Reading, I think, do take more effectively, but are less generous than we are. So we are more generous than Reading, but we are prudent to get.
Thank you. Any, anybody any questions on that? Council first.
Yes. I have some issues on this. The issue I have with this is that the paper that comes with the report is rather thin to some of these. It mentions about the hardship fund, but it doesn't give a detail associated with things like the number of... It lacks financial information, other than a single figure about, suppose, bringing a hundred and fifty thousand pounds. There's no evidence provided to say how this figure has been derived. I suspect this figure is a guess. It also looks very much like the paper produced last year. I'll have to look at last year's paper. So I have following specifics. And I, it's the detail I'm worried about here because we'll be asked about on something to increase the percentage from ten percent that people pay to twenty percent. Yet I can't see any, you know, how much money did we make last year? How much did it cost, etc.? So how many people were involved? And I have that, I would actually say if it wasn't a finance paper, I'd actually call this in. I can't because it's a finance paper. I had a regular meeting with Chief Exec, I will have this agenda written because I have very great concerns about what's there. As I say, I'm going to detail the impact on resident bulk, how much extra they would be expected to pay, how many would be impacted, and what are the possible consequences of implementing this proposal. It also does not include any reference to the income achieved by the changes introduced last year. If you look at the table, it actually says zero. How much was raised last year? How many people have it impacted? There's nothing, there's nothing there. That's what I'm concerned about. Also, I have concerns about the restriction of the outdated beneficial changes to one kind a month. The council, I'm not sure if you understand, but the very people that this would impact are often on zero hours contracts or have jobs where the hours they work varies from week to week. Sometimes they were enough to pay full council tax, sometimes not. However, it takes the council six weeks to rejig things. So we're actually asking members of the public to be limited to four. I think four weeks is far too short. Also, it says that these proposals do not impact on pensioners. I therefore query whether this particular element, that last part I mentioned about restricting it to four weeks, isn't actually discriminatory and may be potentially illegal. So I'm very unsure about that. Whilst this proposal will raise money...
It might be easier if I could just answer one or two of your questions. The issue of the four weeks is to bring it as line of housing benefit. So it's simply, it's not, we aren't actually being unreasonable. It is, what we're trying to catch is the people who take two years to tell us we're chairing. And that's, that's really where we're coming from on that one. We're not aiming to penalise people who particularly forget unreasonably. But it's because there are other benefits that do have these restrictions in, it would seem to be sensible to have them all on the same terms. So that's the reason for that.
I've been dealing with people in various cases. And it often takes the council six weeks to sort things out. So whilst there may be a four-week issue, if the council is taking six weeks... So whilst there may be a four-week issue, the council is taking six weeks to deal with it, so we're not adhering to the four weeks, and I'm just saying that four weeks is very expensive. Do you want me to carry on? Whilst this proposal will work, there's no reference to the other financial impacts, and therefore as councillors, we have been here to make a decision, and we don't know what the impact is, so that's what my concern is of these bearings. There's no reference to any other financial impacts of such a change we give. We'd only need a small number of households to be evicted or to blow a good percentage of income. I notice there's thirteen people went into the hardship fund, but we need to be aware that the people use the front desk a lot, so we could end up, we're trying to cut numbers, and we're the people who are on debt and suchlike. So we could end up pursuing someone for something like six pounds a week, because if you have band D at fifteen hundred pounds, twenty percent is three hundred pounds, six pounds a week. So you could be in a situation of pursuing somebody for six pounds a week, week in, week out. These are people who are already financially strapped, who six pounds a week is actually quite a lot of money, and people are on £160 a week, you know, and their rent's under eight, and you take six pounds, there's only forty-odd pounds left. So you're also trying to pursue extra money out of people who are going to be very difficult to get. So what I would end up saying is things like, if we do this at six pounds a week, we could find after ten weeks they're owing sixty pounds, after twenty weeks it's £120, I'm not sure I'm not right this time. And it grows. The council will then start eviction decision, because we're into that, but then we would come up with a payment plan. But the problem is, the figure will still grow, because the six pounds, if they're not able to pay it. And I'm, what I'm saying is, because there isn't any information in the papers, and it doesn't just says it straight, one fifty, I don't know what the number of people is, I've done some sums, and if you take the £150,000 in Scotland, rather than a guess, you were talking about a thousand households in this borough, most of them wouldn't be on band D, so they'd be on band C and B, so that makes it more like fifteen hundred families, who are the families, the lower course families in the borough, who are going to be the ones having the struggle. And I quote, when the new Prime Minister stood up, and she said that these were the very things that she wanted to address, yet we're eating into the small amount of income that they have over the above, paying for their rents and things. And I think that for us to be able to make a decision on moving to ten to twenty percent, then there would need to be the rest of active information associated with it. And I think that at the moment, I just, we're just getting a proposal that says we'll increase to ten to twenty, yet I don't, none of us knows what the number of people it affects, what they would do, what the impact would be, and that's it.
Can I, can I just ask, is your question that there's not enough figures here?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So, I'll take yours.
I think the issue is that this is something that we look at each year. We consult on this, and we have consulted widely on it. We compare ourselves with neighbouring authorities. I think Reading has already at twenty percent, so if neighbouring authorities can collect twenty percent, it doesn't seem that we shouldn't be able to. The officers have no interest in trying to create a amount of money to be collected, that they're then going to have problems collecting. We've taken a lot of consideration around collectibility. We've put the hardship fund in, which I think would address the candidate and person who are talking about. I would point out that if we're moving from ten percent to twenty percent, if not six per week, it's three is the difference, because they will be paying three already. And I think this is a very modest proposal, but given the nature of the amount of money the government have taken on office and continue to take office, you know, we have to look everywhere, and to some extent, you know, we have to look for each part of our residents to pay something. I'm not asking them to pay a lot, and I do think that they should pay something. It's a shame that some of your questions I couldn't have had earlier, and I could have done a bit more work to find the detail that you've asked for, but I think that there's plenty of detail in the paper in order to be able to vote on it tonight.
I would totally agree, apart from the mention of the head hardship reference, there's a figure of £150,000, which doesn't give any indication, also doesn't say anything about what you raised last year, which I would have expected, and how many people actually are paying the reduced funds. And I think that I'm putting my business out on here from my work, and I just think that if we're going to be making a decision on something like this, we need to understand what the issues are. And I don't think it's very honest to be presented with just a one fable there. And I think that that is where I'm concerned.
David?
I think, I disagree with you in the sense that I think, as I say, this is something that we keep a lot of a weathered eye on. I think the information that's in the paper is sufficient to make the decision. If we're going to make changes for the end of this, for the beginning of next year, that's why I've come here, because, you know, we have, we've gone through an eight to ten week consultation process last autumn, and as I say, it's a relatively small change, and I don't think that it's going to adversely impact a large number of people. We are very, very good as a local authority, keeping an eye on those people who are particularly vulnerable and who have particular problems in the extremities that you're talking about, which is why we've put the hardship fund in place, and we do make payments under it. And I think the people that you're concerned about will be taken care of by that fund.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm a little bit confused, listening to Council of Paris about the one calendar month. So he's mentioned several times about the processing time for the council has been six weeks. I don't see how relevant that is to the one calendar month, because the one calendar month, as I read it here, which I'd like you to confirm or otherwise, is for notification to the council. It's not, once it's been notified, processing through. So the six weeks of processing, or eight weeks, or whatever it is, is actually relevant, because that's not what this is talking about. This is saying that you need to notify the council within one calendar month of changes. Is that, am I reading that correctly?
You are reading that correctly. What it also means is if you don't notify us two years, and then you do, we will only go back one calendar month, we won't go back two years. So it's encouraging people, A, to let us know, but also it's not creating, you know, hidden liabilities to the council that could go back and consider that a tap. And as I say, it is, it's bringing the council tax benefit in line with housing benefit.
Are there any other questions? Shall I just come back on that? Quickly, if you can.
Yes, I must honestly say, the thing that I'm concerned about is that lots of these people who are in the financial situation, they're always, they're in financial problems, they're often in debt, and they're often in rips. And what tends to happen, and I've seen it, and I've sat down through various cases that we've had here, they sometimes come in and out, and their circumstances change. Now, if it is, as Councilor Baker said, that it's the start of the change, you notify change, that you don't, what is unchanged, they're notifying, because six to eight weeks later, they could be on a different salary, because people's salary's doing this, and it's going up and down. And sometimes they're eligible for housing benefits, sometimes they have to pay extra council tax. I've known people who have partially paid council tax full for a part of the year, and then go down, and they have to notify their situation all the time. And so there's a difference between the one-off, if, as Councilor Baker said, if it was, it's the trigger once, I would agree with what was said, but what's happening is that people's circumstances change through the year, and that's the circumstances of people who are often in this situation, who are going up and down, and that's, that's the issue I've got.
But, sorry, may I come back? If people are, as you described, then surely they will get into the habit to notify the council regularly.